And then.
Do you find it?
If it's red, if it's red, they can't hear you.
If it's, is it green?
Yeah, it's green.
If it's green, then you're live.
All right. Everybody ready? Nope. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It's six o'clock. And if you'll stand, we'll say the pledge. Mr. Clay, would you plead us this evening?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records show that all board members are present in person this evening.
Yep.
And we will begin with our first item on the agenda, our recognitions, if we have any.
No recognitions this evening.
None this evening. Moving on to our presentations, our academic spotlight with literacy partnerships with Lavellette Elementary.
So we have with us tonight, we have Lauren and Bailey who teach kindergarten and fifth grade, right?
Third, fourth.
Third, fourth, and fifth, okay, from Lavellette. And actually Bailey's name on the agenda says Bailey Sanders, but her name is actually Bailey Stiltner. We do also have a Bailey Sanders in the county. And so, as you all know, we have our ELA and our math cadres and, gosh, I don't know, maybe December, I think was it maybe the December ELA cadre? Lauren is the representative on the ELA elementary cadre for Lavellette Elementary. And one of the things that Rhonda O'Neil does at the cadre meeting is she has them all do a share out at the beginning of each meeting. And Lauren had shared something that was really neat, so Rhonda had asked her to reach out and just share with me a little bit of what they were doing and to build literacy partnerships between the kindergarteners and the older students. And as soon as I heard what they were doing, I immediately thought, just what a great idea, and it would just make a perfect academic spotlight. And so we asked them to present, and they graciously agreed. So we are going to turn it over to our friends from Lavellette.
That's not gonna happen.
Like, I'm not sure.
Bailey, it's good to see you.
You too.
She was one of my kids at Lavellette, now she's here with her kids.
All right, so we have kind of named ourselves the Literacy Leopards. And so we just wanted to share a few pictures, some videos, and kind of what we're doing with that. So basically what we're doing is we're partnering kindergarten students with fifth grade students from my class and her class, and they get together at least once a month. And the kindergarteners will bring their library books with them, and they will, they have their partner that they're set with, and they get to read their books to the, the fifth graders, read the books to the kindergarteners, and then the kindergarteners will go back through afterwards, retell the story, look for sight words, decode some of the words that they've been practicing in class, and just kind of get to have that experience with the fifth graders. So here are some of our students' pairs reading. We get to take them a few different places. We've been out in the hallway, been in the library, just anywhere that kind of fits what we need. So some of the benefits of, for kindergarten at least, is they get to hear different readers than just me all day long. They get tired of hearing my voice or my ECAT's voice, so it's nice for them to get to hear someone else. They get to experience different types of texts, because they can choose anything from the library. So it might be an informational text, it might be just anything that they get to read, and they'll see it read to them. They get to practice, like I said, the retelling, the sight words, decoding, just any, the different skills that they can go through, which we've talked with our fifth graders about, to have them remember to point those out to the students.
And then just, oh, go ahead.
Hopefully these videos will work. We took some interviews with some of our kids of what they liked about this program. So here are three of the kindergarten students, hopefully we can hear it and see it.
Why do you like having the big kids read to you? Why do you like having them read to you? They're good readers.
Okay, so I know it's a little bit hard to hear, but the first little girl, she said that she liked it because they were nice to her, and she liked getting to meet them. The second little girl said that she just liked getting to hang out with the older kids. And the third little boy said he thought they were good readers, so that's why they liked going to them.
Why do you like having the big kids read?
Yeah, and then, so kind of just to build off of that, the fifth graders, it's really helped with their fluency and like their confidence with reading, because this class that I have is, we have like eight kids, I think with an IP and two with a 504. So some of them aren't the strongest readers, and it really makes them feel good when they can sit down and they can read something confidently to these kids. And then even those higher kids too, like, they slow down and they read a picture book. Like, these kids love picture books, even, I mean, all the way through 12th grade. I still enjoy picture books. So it's exciting when they read a book, it's like, oh, I remember reading this when I was in kindergarten. And they get, they get as excited as the kindergartners do about it. So it's built, they've built really good relationships with, with this group. And then even when they pass them, like, walk into specials or walk into the cafeteria, it's like, hey buddy, and like, they're hugging on each other. So they're building outside of doing this, like, literacy program, that's obviously.
And they've also, I feel like they've been really patient with our kids, because, I mean, my kids are five and six-year-olds, they're not the most patient, or they won't sit for the longest time, but the fifth graders have been really good with them and treating them really kindly. And it's, I think it shows with even my kids saying, they're nice to me, they're kind to me, which you don't see a lot of fifth grade kindergarten relationships, so it's nice that they have someone to look up to, and the fifth graders are getting to be leaders with those kids. And here are some of our fifth graders.
So that's kind of the biggest thing, is that they love that the little kids are looking up to them so much. And then the first little girl, her sister's actually in kindergarten, so she said that I like when they come out their sight words. So like, we'll have the fifth graders read through the book the first time, and then they will actually go back and find the sight words that they were finding in class to the fifth graders, and then we'll kind of do like one more, like, read it together, read through it, and talk about the pictures kind of thing. So she was able to say like, oh, I know those sight words, because her sister works on it at home.
All right, so we have a little bit of data here, and this is pulled straight from our STAR reading and STAR early literacy benchmarks recently. This is from the fall to winter benchmarks. In kindergarten, we had 14 out of the 20 students in my class that were high growth and high proficiency. 11 of those students scored on grade level for the scaled score, and four of them were above grade level, and 11 students were at or above the 60th percentile.
And then the same thing for fifth grade, based off the benchmark, it says four out of 18 of them were high growth, high proficiency, another four out of 18 were high growth, low proficiency, and two were on grade level, and then five were above grade level with those scores.
And then we just have another picture here of one of our other pairs, and then.
And just to add to that, like, I think I've heard her say maybe like four words to me all year. Like, she's just that kid that doesn't want, you know, she's, don't call on me, don't look at me, don't interact with me, and she, to see her like go out of her way, like, read and have these conversations, like, it, I don't know, it just makes me happy that she's interacting, like, she's excited every week. It's like, are we, are we doing it this week, are we doing it this week? And, and she's one of those kids that I never, like, I didn't expect her to come to me like, are we, are we reading with the kindergarteners today? So I just love to see that.
And then last, we have some goals that we want to continue working towards. Increase, of course, increasing those STAR reading scores, which is always a big thing for us. We want our kids to score the highest that they possibly can. We want them to branch out, this to branch out to other classes and other grade levels, since we do have two grade levels per, two classes per grade level. It would be nice to get the other fifth grade involved in the other kindergarten, and even first through fourth as well. And then I, as a kindergarten teacher, my goal is that every time we go back, that each of my kids are reading more of their books back to the fifth graders with their phonics skills that they're building in my class. Any questions?
That's fantastic. I mean, you're not only engaging the older kids with the younger ones, but you're giving confidence to the older ones, and, I mean, that's, that's huge at that age, so.
Sometimes the impact those peer relationships can have. And, you know, we have that resource right there in all of our schools, if you just kind of think outside the box.
And use it. I'd love to see both kindergarten classes and both fifth grade classes participating in some similar type of program, that'd be great.
It really takes me, go ahead. Reminds me of when I, my first four years when I went to school. And we had this going on all the time. And it helped both, it helped you accelerate if you were younger, because you were listening to what was going on above you. If you picked, you picked up on it, and then the older kids could explain it to you better than the teacher could. And then it, when you were older and doing that, it helped reinforce some of your concept and made it more solid in your head, what you're learning, so this is a great idea. Seems like old things are new again, aren't they?
Yeah, I guess I came from a more affluent community. We had a two-room schoolhouse when I went. But yeah, you had the older students, now candidly, it was more the girls than the guys, but they were, they really helped teach a lot of the younger kids, and it was great.
Fantastic. Is there anything that you can think of that might promote your first and fourth grade, or?
I think it's just working with those schedules. I mean, I'm lucky that we happen to be best friends outside of work as well, so it's easy for us to pair together and work together, and we run the Beta Club and things at Lavellette as well. So it's easy for us to get together and just say, hey, let's try this. And of course, Ms. Brewer's very, she's open to any ideas we want to try, and so I think it's just getting the word out to those other grade levels, that like, let's try to work out a schedule, let's try to.
I think so, now that we've tried it and that we know that it works, like, we worked out the KINGS and stuff, that I think they could, because I do third, fourth, and fifth grade this year with the departmentalizing, so hopefully we can line that up somehow.
Yeah.
And I mean, I have, I have 21 kindergarteners, that's a lot of five-year-olds, and I was really worried going into it the first time, how are they gonna behave, how are they gonna act? But honestly, they have done really well with that, and they know it's a privilege to get to go and be with the older kids, so they're always on their best behavior when they go out to do this.
Right. So now, do you, do you have certain students who participate, or is it all fifth graders in your class and all kindergarteners? So there's no, maybe a fifth grader who's maybe not as affluent in reading as others, but they're still able to work with the kindergarten?
Yeah, I think we kind of like strategically paired them up, so that it's not as, like, I have a couple of fifth graders that maybe are picking out picture books when they go to the library, and so they don't really feel intentions on them, like, they're, you know what I mean? So I think, I think we, it took a while to like look at their scores and look at, like, this one's fluent, and this one can handle this kid, and kind of like piece it together, but.
Gotcha.
I think we finally got it figured out, yeah.
Well, I mean, this is on my first full year in kindergarten, and I was lucky that I was third through fifth intervention at Lavellette for two and a half years before this. So I knew a lot of these fifth graders from intervention and just being down in that building, so it was easy to kind of pair what I knew about those kids with what I knew about my kindergarten. So I think that would be part of it too, when it branches out to the other grade levels, that those two teachers need to come together and try to pair.
Right. Excellent. That's fantastic, fantastic.
Good work, we appreciate your effort to partner together for, for the benefits of both groups. So fantastic, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Good job, girls. And good job, Tanya.
I listen. Had a big baby sex over there.
Sorry, shut it off, please.
Oh, that's okay, I should've said something like that quickly.
Throw it back up there.
Would like to share those on the website. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again.
It's always nice to see somebody thinking outside of the box and bringing something new.
Nikki, you're up next.
Move it, Nikki, move it.
Sorry, all the good stuff just left.
No, Nikki may have some good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we are passing this out. So on page five is our state benchmark assessment data, which I was planning on having tonight, but due to all of the school closures and delays, we've had to extend that window. So we don't have that new data yet. However, our winter benchmark for the STAR testing we do in December, so that is new. So that starts on page seven. You want to turn there. So that second half of page seven, this is our STAR data. So STAR early literacy, that's what we assess with our kindergarten and first grade students. Kindergarten in the fall was at 35%, that's jumped all the way to 62% this month. That's huge growth, which we're very excited about. First grade also had growth, not as huge. However, what happens with some of our first graders is once they hit a certain score on that early literacy test, if they're ready to move on to STAR reading, we have those teachers push them on to STAR reading. So it kind of skews our data a little bit, because some of those kids go out of STAR early literacy and into the STAR reading, excuse me, into the STAR reading score. So that's sometimes why you don't see as big, as much growth there, there actually is. It's just those kids' scores are now factored into the STAR reading down below.
Gotcha.
So STAR reading is at the bottom to the left. You can see from fall to winter, across all grade levels, you can see the growth there. Overall, this fall, we were at 34%, currently we're at 39%. You will see there's a couple areas we had great growth, there's a couple areas there, you see some negative growth.
Seven to nine, it's a nice.
I will say, I don't have an answer for this. Sometimes we see that in data. What I'm curious to see is how this aligns to our state benchmark testing. So these are two totally different assessments, like we've talked about before. This is skills-based, whereas our benchmark assessments that they're currently testing, that's our standards, and it aligns to the GSA they take at the end of the year. So we're just looking forward to seeing that data when it comes in and how it compares to this. I will say, so far, the data that we're seeing from that has been very positive. I hope as the scores come in, it stays positive. And then with math, you can see from fall to winter, overall, we started at 34% and currently overall we're at 41%. And the only place you see that decrease was in the sixth grade group here, which wasn't the case with STAR reading, sixth grade had growth. So we'll see how that aligns next month, after we get this state benchmark data in. We'll see how those scores correlate and what our growth is with that. You flip over to page nine, this is our percentage of students reading on grade level. This is also assessed through the Renaissance STAR. This has some trend data on here too. So you can see towards the right there for this school year, how we've moved from fall to winter. We've had some big gains there in some of our grades. And then again, our seventh grade group was our group of concern there with this light dip. And then if you want to compare, like, I was looking back last school year, how we moved from fall to winter and where we were at in the winter. Overall, which I know that's two different groups of students, but if you look, you know, third to third last year to this year, it's kind of similar how our third graders performed last year to how they performed this year, you know, and on down. And then if we move to page 10, this is our attendance data, which for January, chronic absenteeism, actually in December we were at 29%, in January, that's come down to 26%. But in talking with Terry Lynn today, we talked about how those five NTID days, that's basically considered perfect attendance for five days. So it kind of skews our data for the positive in this case. So I would say when we get anywhere in March, we'll start to see a little more realistic numbers there where we're at. And then our staff attendance is on page 11. So overall, professional and service was at 15%, chronically absent for January. And then the last data I have to report on tonight, I was very pleased with this, it's on page 13. This is our walkthrough data. And we have very high expectations with our administrators in completing these walkthroughs. We have not been in school hardly at all in January. I was expecting to run this report and not see much of anything, and we have 130 walkthroughs with our administrators. So I think that was much harder than I anticipated to see with very few days in for this month, because we, you know, had some schools that were in less even than others due to water and power issues. So you can see that we've had 130 some month, so far this month for January. Our think ratios were 15% low, 63% medium, and 22% high. That 22% is, as far as highs, is lower than what we've seen, but I also think that's because our kids are getting back, and we've had to play a lot of catch-up in the few days we've been back. And then at the bottom, of course, is our participation ratios, and you can see that's, that's positive. We have high numbers there in the medium and high. So those are my updates, and then next month, that's when we can really dive into that state benchmark data, and that's what we have been breaking down by our special education population, our IP's and 504's, and we'll see how that correlates with our STAR data. and we'll see how that correlates with our STAR data.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Nope.
That covers it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can move on to our good news section. Anyone have any good news to share?
I actually do.
Share away.
Ms. Alexander looks nervous. I was gonna do this, but I just think something, and I think that Nikki and Greg could speak to this too. When we go to meetings at the state level, we, we often hear positive feedback from our partners at the State Department about the work we're doing in Wayne County. Whenever they talk about best practices and initiatives, in most cases, we find that we are ahead of the curve. And very often, they will even ask, in an impromptu, sometimes planned, sometimes impromptu, they will ask us to even speak about what we're doing. And so earlier in January, there were two state-level meetings that were done over teams. One was a focus on writing, and the other was a focus on how do you support administrators with all of this shift toward best practices aligned with what the research tells us about science of reading? And we were asked to be part of a panel and do a short presentation to the entire state with both of those. So
That's impressive.
That is good news.
Really, really, really proud to be part of Wayne County.
Right. It's nice, I know even when we go to our state meetings, a lot of people are just talking about certain things that we've already been doing.
Yes.
That's kind of the experience that we all have, and it makes us just really proud.
Right.
We love it.
Yeah.
Well, we do.
When we can share that, we, oh gosh, yeah, we've been doing that for two years now. They're like, okay, how did you get that started, or what, you know, what did you put into it? And it's always nice that you, we can share that information. So we appreciate your hard work as well, so it does not go unnoticed.
I have something, I may have shared it before, but I'm gonna do it again. Spoke with Dave Cottle, our fire science instructor, and all of our students passed the first level of their firefighting class.
Well, that's good news.
Along with hazardous material management
Wow.
and CPR, so.
That's exciting.
That is, exactly.
That's a little more comforting for Wayne County citizens.
That's great.
And more options for our kids, so that's fantastic.
You said all students passed it?
All of them passed, all three, wow, three areas.
Good stuff, good stuff happening.
Yes.
Well, thank you all very much. Moving on to our informational items. Special board meeting on Thursday, January the 30th, beginning at 6:30 here in the conference room. Special board meeting on Tuesday, February the 4th, beginning at four at Wayne Elementary School. That's one of our LSIC meetings.
Okay.
Regular board meeting on Tuesday, February the 11th, beginning at six here in the conference room. Special board meeting on Tuesday, February the 18th, four o'clock at Lavalette. That's another LSIC meeting.
Yeah.
Winter break is February 21st through February 24th. And then we're back here in the board conference room on Tuesday, February 25th at four o'clock for
Is that, is the four o'clock correct, rather than six? Okay.
That should be correct, to the six o'clock. Then I wanted to check, we need to reschedule the Fort Gay-Pritchard LSIC meeting and
Oh, yeah.
the, if you could check your calendars for possibly February the 13th, the Thursday. That would be a 4:00 PM meeting at Fort Gay, followed by a trip over to Pritchard.
February 13th, Fort Gay?
Yeah.
That's Saturday?
No, it's a Thursday.
Thursday.
At four?
Start at four, and then?
Then recess and go to?
Recession, go to Pritchard, yeah.
Okay, it's Thursday, okay.
Yeah, let me, let me double check and make sure I didn't
Thursday, the 13th.
Yeah, it's a Thursday.
Okay. Fort Gay and then Pritchard starting at four o'clock.
Fort Gay at four o'clock, and then Pritchard, yeah, be approximately 10 after five, something like that.
I don't have anything on my calendar. My time is Pritchard.
It'll follow.
Be, did following?
Yeah.
Five o'clock, 5:15, something like that.
That's the reschedule.
Mark said that worked for you?
Everyone good?
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
Fantastic, so.
Okay, so we'll reschedule for February 13th.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll double check with the schools and make sure that that date works. I was originally gonna go February 6th,
Yeah.
but we have that state meeting up in Charleston, and I think some of you were involved in meetings on that first day. So I had already checked that date with them, but I'll follow up and check the 13th, and then I'll
Perfect.
Okey-dokey.
All right, moving on to our construction project updates.
Yeah, the, so we've got four key things going on. Three of those key things are still in the design phase. The Sarita Canova Elementary School Alumni Gym, we have a grant to do some work there in the basement of that facility. We're still doing design work there. What it would do is sprinkle that basement and provide some HVAC upgrades there to make that usable space for both locker rooms and for some additional educational space.
Okay.
The Wayne High School Voag Building, of course, we purchased the building to put up. We bid that out, and then the construction, or the, the cost for putting that building up came well above what the budget was set out for that, what the architect said it would come in at. So we're working on a redesign of those specs. McKinley's working on that currently for us. So I'm hoping to have something here by the end of, the end of February that we can advertise.
Okay.
Buffalo K-8 project, we're still in the design phase there. Our next meeting is this Friday, where we, where we will be discussing the traffic patterns, and some of the civil engineers have gotten back information regarding recommendations for the traffic flow. So that meeting will be this Friday. And then we have the Construction Services Administration, or Construction Management Services for that job are currently advertised, and we will be accepting proposals from interesting companies to, to help us with the construction of that, of that school. And then finally, the Wayne Elementary School Major Improvement Project. That's the pre-K three-room addition at the school. The block was finished being laid up, I believe, today. Of course, I told you at the last meeting that the snow had put us a little bit behind. The iron workers are scheduled to begin work either tomorrow or Thursday, so we can get that under roof. So that's the next step, and they're scheduled to be here Thursday. They're gonna try to get them in tomorrow, because they finished up a little bit earlier than what they thought. But in the next 48 hours, we should see, still starting to go up on the, on the roof area down at Wayne Elementary School.
Great.
That's all I have.
All right, excellent. Any questions on those projects? Anyone?
Nope.
All right, moving on to our delegation section. Do we have any delegations this evening?
No.
This evening? We have none?
None.
Superintendent Director reports.
Yeah, there's a number of reports here, and there's been some movement in the last few days at things at the federal level that I'm gonna update you on as well. So I'm gonna add a few things to these reports. So let's just start with the virtual school update for 2024, 2025 school year. At our last meeting, there were some questions about the virtual program, and so I asked Mr. Clay to come this evening.
Okay.
He's been working closely with Mr. Miller on our virtual program.
I just, I talked with Mr. Alexander just to put some informational items in here, so you can see how virtual school operates, our role, Canal County's role, how everything has been progressing so far this year. Of course, you know, we have partnered this year with Canal County Schools, and they are housing, I guess is the word we could use, our virtual school this year. And up to this point, things have been going rather smoothly. Second page, you can see just a couple, this is some flyers that I've put together, just again, some informational items that I've thrown in here just for your, your benefit. Of course, it is, Canal County Schools created curriculum, but they have put together that students access their content via SchoolG. They have their own SchoolG account, asynchronous learning, where they have some recorded instruction, where they have some live instruction, and it is 6 through 12. We don't have our elementary school in virtual school. Canal County doesn't have elementary school, but Wayne County only has 6 through 12.
There's been, and we had made that decision a while ago not to offer it at the elementary level. It's, the research on that is, it's, tends to be negative for the outcome for elementary kids to participate in virtual. So we just offer it 6 through 12. Now, when you say it's Canal County Schools created curriculum, these are the, these are the state courses that our kids are required with state standards and
Yes, content aligned to the state CSO that we, we have to teach. And I've got a list actually on the next page, is a list of all courses that our students have access from middle school through high school. This is, for Canal County, again, on the right, you see the core courses, which are Math, ELAs, or Studies of Science. If you see an asterisk beside of that, that means that it is an honors credit class that are optional for those students who qualify for that. And then on the left is the elective courses for all students in middle school through high school. I've kind of broke that down again on the next page. This is, the next page is just high school courses from that first list that I showed you there. This is all the high school courses that are available to 9 through 12 students. Again, same layout, core courses on the right, Math, ELAs, Studies of Science, elective ones are on the, on the left side, again with honors, with the asterisk beside of them that are offered for that.
Ask you one question, I'm just curious, things like physical education and dance, and they're taking it virtually, how does, how does that work?
They have different activities that they have to do and journal how that they do those activities during PE classes. They do have, from 6 through 12, the PE courses in there. They range from different activities. Sometimes they do have times that they get together and play a game. They try to push as much social activity, which is difficult for us in Wayne County. Canal County, being as big as they are, they have field trips, and they have different activities for their virtual school to get together. So that their PE classes do, and our kids are, of course, welcome to go to that, but rarely do they take advantage to, take advantage of that.
Thank you.
The next sheet is again, middle school, I've just taken that first list that I showed you. This is the middle school courses that are available to our middle school students. The asterisk on this page is, is courses that are available for high school thread. There's a couple of those, such as Spanish, Spanish 1, Spanish 2, and some students who are eligible, there are some times that their schedule will permit it, they can go take different high school courses and move forward and accelerate a little bit. Next page is our enrollment for the county, put together for each school. Our total enrollment right now is 49, now that's about to change, because we have some students who are coming in for second semester. We have some students who go meet the GPA for second semester. A handful we've got to send back to in-person because of that requirement. So right now, we're at 49, that's, that's fluctuating in the next week or so. On the left is the total enrollment by school, on the right is by grade level. Of course, you can see high school is our, our biggest
Yeah.
area that we have virtually. Just to show you in comparison, of course, we all know Canal County is a rather large county. I asked them for their numbers just to show what, how big a program that they do have, and that's what these next couple of pages are, is to show you how in-depth they are with their virtual school program. The left is how many students they have in each program level, elementary, high. Of course, 49 is our number down at the bottom. And on the right, there's a couple of different indicators, or they call them singletons. There's some of the students who are just taking maybe one course virtually, and the other courses are taking in-person at the time. And then there's some other numbers, some alternative, they're alternative schools, just as ours does. Some of those students go through the virtual process as well. A lot of students in Canal County.
I think when we originally talked to them, they had even more enrolled, I think they were up around 1,000. And so that, that number's lower than what I expected.
Next page is just last year's success rate as far as course pass rate. I was curious how, how they did last year as far as students passing the courses. Of course, they do have, like we do, their, their requirement is a little different. I think they have to pass two-thirds of the courses, where we have the GPA requirement to stay in. But you can see there with high school, middle school, elementary, their success rate has been pretty impressive. Next page is some of our requirements that we have as a county, this is for Wayne County, 2.0 GPA. They do have to attend an orientation, which Canal County takes care of. Their virtual coaches have been excellent to work with, they communicate consistently with our students. They're, they're on the ball. They, they're constantly meeting with them, looking at their schedule, realigning their schedule. They need to readjust it so that they're not falling behind. And they, they, they're just, they've been great to communicate with and great to work with. Of course, our schools are, the student's homeschool sets the schedule for whatever that student may need in virtual school. The counselor usually is the one that sends over the schedule to Canal County Schools to let them know what courses that they need to be assigned to in SchoolG and in WIVUS. We do issue devices to them. They are assigned an individual virtual coach, which is a position that Canal County has. There are several, and I've got a list on them, here how many virtual coaches that Canal County has, but each student does have a virtual coach assigned to them. They do have tutoring available for them online, in-person in Canal County as well, which we don't have very many students, I don't think, take advantage of that part. But we do have some that take advantage of the online tutoring opportunity. And office hours as well for the teachers that are teaching the course, they're required to have daily office hours to support and tutor those students as they go forward. The pacing guide, they have, all of their assignments are uploaded to SchoolG at the beginning of the semester, and as they move forward, they have provided a pacing guide on how much they should do each week. Should that student fall behind and not do as much as they should, which we know students do that, those virtual coaches will realign that schedule so that they can stay on task or stay where they need to be, so that they're not falling behind too far as they're moving forward. And they do communicate with Greg and I on a, on a consistent basis too, from Canal County. I just, this is one of the things that they threw out in their orientation, or some myths about virtual school. I thought this was rather interesting, I threw that in there for you to look at. One of the stipulations that some people have about virtual school, that it's an easy out, by no means. What I've seen is it an easy way to get out of, out of schoolwork. It does require a lot of independence, a lot of organization and proactivity for those students to begin to, to follow through with that schedule that's been given to them. They, there's no deadlines is another myth. There are deadlines that they have to meet in order to be successful. They're not on their own, myth number three, virtual students lack socialization and social skills. They do have opportunities, the elementary takes several field trips, and middle school does as well. I'm not sure how much our students have been involved in those field trips, but they are offered to our students too. Now, through their fact, just so you can see how big Canal County Virtual School is, I've listed their, their staff on the next couple of pages and kind of broken it down to what each position is. So there is tons of support for these students. Starting with an executive director, a director working under her, one counselor, two full-time virtual coaches, one lead virtual coach, so that's three virtual coaches that are full-time. And then they have five teachers who serve as virtual coaches as well, and a teacher. And then you can see how many teachers they have, 43 high school teachers and 18 middle school teachers. Next page is just their names, some information about who they are, the ones that we work with are, are in red there. Amy Campbell is one of the counselors that communicates with us regularly, and Brittany Dameron as well. And then I've included the teachers there as well on the next couple of pages, so you can see the courses they teach, how many teachers they have. Middle school teachers, high school teachers. There is a CR code there on one of the flyers that has some more information. If you want to scan it with your phone and go look at some of the things on their website that they have available for more information, you can look at that. And then on the next to the last page, I thought this, we've seen how big Canal County is. We have looked at the number of students compared to Wayne County's 49 students that are involved in this program. Each month, they do a newsletter they send out to all their students and myself. And in November And in November and December, we have had four students that have been the shining stars for that grade level in the virtual program. So I thought that was something that should kind of spotlight for us in, in comparison with big Canal County, here's four of our Wayne County students that are shining bright. I think all these are Spring Valley students except for Blake Dalton on the November list, he's a Wayne High School student. Any questions for me?
Who is it, who is it from Canal County that communicates with you the most?
Brittany Dameron has been the one that we've been working with, they've just shifted some positions there and we're moving second semester as soon as everything's finalized with grades and they get second semester, first semester taken care of. Amy Campbell is going to be our main contact person.
Are we the only school system that's partnering with Canal like this?
As far as I know, yes.
How many kids did we have that didn't make the GPA requirement to stay in virtual?
We're working on that right now, as their, their semester ended on Friday and Brittany is in the process of getting me those names over, we've had some students that are right on the edge, but we will be sending probably five, six, seven back to in person because of the GPA.
There's a lot smaller number than has been in past years.
Right.
And I think that through the course of the first semester, there were about three or four that we told, because we check regularly. In the third failing classes miserably, the sixth week or second sixth week, we brought them back. And it was, it was a minimal number compared to what we were doing by three or four during the semester.
So along the way, you're, you're communicating with these students that are struggling, so they, they're not just surprised.
Because their credits, and so if they can't afford to fail the first semester because they lose a half credit, we're trying to figure out how to get them credit recovery and still be virtual, I mean, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Right.
One of the questions I had, Mr. Clay, was, do you have access to set in on a class? Are you like the computer classes, I mean, sort of like, I guess, a virtual walkthrough, are you?
I don't have access to the actual coursework that's going on in the class. I do have access to their grades, to the assignments that have been provided in through School G. And that's something that I asked them to set me up on every year, which they had to go, our, our School G account is different than Canal County School G account, so they had to create an account for me in Canal County through Weavis so that I could get even access to the grades. But as far as looking at each individual assignment or seeing the, the videos or anything like that, I do not have, have access to that.
Well, I personally think for the record that you should have some type of access to be able to look into it from time to time to make sure that it's what's being portrayed, if you will.
Do the, do our students' parents, are they aware of your involvement and have contact information for here?
Yes, yes, they, they, I'm kind of an in-between person that they've communicated with me and then I relay them off to Brittany. But usually they come to me first because I'm a county person, they, they always hold their concerns with me. And I've had, the biggest issue we had was at the beginning of the year with just getting devices in the students' hands and getting School G rolling out and just the tech side was the, was the major hurdle that we had and me getting access to School G so that I could help direct them in the right direction. But yes, they, they do have, and usually I call here trying to find out an answer, they, they did great was, was working with them last year and they were just the counselors know that I'm working, and the principals know that I'm working with this, so they usually, any questions, they come through to me or they cc me and Greg together in an email and we'll, we'll get to them.
Is there any complaints from parents other than the first ones about the devices and things like that? But is there any, are there any complaints about the curriculum or?
No, I've not had any complaints about curriculum or anything to do with the program at all. Just the only hiccups have been some, some technology issues with, with some devices and that's been taken care of through our technical department.
Have any data or contact with these homeschoolers or so-called home scholarship receivers that take classes through that? Any data on that?
Yeah, that's not under our umbrella.
So we have no way of knowing.
We don't know anything about homeschool or home scholarship.
And are we going to be held responsible?
No, as far as I know, no. And the kids that go to charter schools, we don't have any, they're not under our umbrella also. So we don't, like, the kids that rolled into the West Virginia Virtual Academy, and I had a, I don't know if you got the phone caller, I had a parent call me, my kid can't log on and they were going to the West Virginia Virtual Academy. And so I had to direct them to, to their people to do whatever tech support they needed to do. It kind of caught me off guard because I knew the name, I'm like digging in Weavis to find the kid and trying to see what, you know, and like, when I started digging down, they just went to the virtual academy, so that happens sometimes, you know, so we can, but we don't see what those kids do, so that's, that's independent of us.
Do these kids also participate in the testing, the state testing at the end of the year?
At the end of the year, yes, they, they are required to do the end of the year test.
So does Canal County get that, that, or do we, okay, we do it here, okay.
We'll have to schedule a date for this.
Gotcha.
And one of the things we, we were just, I've been talking, thinking about actually this week is some way to get our students benchmarked so we can get some data on them.
Yeah, that would be great.
Or with the state benchmark, so when Canal County does do that, they bring them in to one building, sort of like we did at the end of the year with the summit of assessment, they bring them in their building at the middle of the year at least, so that they can get some benchmark data to see where they are.
Great. All right, any problems or concerns that you have about the program or?
No, no, other than maybe getting access to what Mark said to some of the programs.
Right, I agree with that. I can't imagine why, if you can see the grades, you should be able to, you know, see, see the classroom.
Think it'd be a problem?
It shouldn't be.
So you've got School G access for the grades, but that doesn't let you see the assignments?
Doesn't let me see the assignments at all, it lets me see the assignment that they have a grade for, but as far as going in and seeing what the actual assignment is, I see it like a heading, what the assignment is with a grade beside of it, as far as seeing the content of the assignment.
Have they given you a reason why, why they haven't given you that access or?
It was, it was like pulling teeth to get access to the grades and they finally figured out a way through the back door, I think, to get me into the grades.
Okay.
So that I can see those students, because I was having parents call me, he's concerned about grades and I was having, it was, it was just.
Long, long way around, right? Gotcha. Maybe a.
Yeah, we can follow up with them about access to assignments.
Technology can talk to their technology or something.
Get tough, Tony, get tough.
Great, well, thank you, thank you for that, any other questions?
Thank you a lot.
And we'll, I guess, you know, here sometime at the end of the year, we'll be considering whether to move forward with that and the next year. So Greg, I think our kids seem to be doing better with this.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of reasons for that, one, the kids who are in the virtual program now are, are the kids who have been success, really successful in the past and their parents are really on, on the ball and they're making sure these kids do that, we've kind of, some of the students who, whose parents maybe, you know, it's an attendance issue or something, they kind of, we've, we've been able to get those kids back in, in person. So the kids that are there, some of them have been since COVID, these virtual kids, and they work really well in that environment. You have those kids that really work well in that environment and you have kids that just don't, you know. We saw with COVID, probably 80% of our kids did not work well in, in that environment. And it's just, you know, we have this option for these kids and I think the kids we have now are, are pretty good. Navigating everything.
Good candidates for the program.
Yeah.
Plus for financially, what we pay for these students and all of the, all of the resources that they have with this program, it seems like a no-brainer. I mean, if we were to go outside and try to source out all these resources and the curriculum and our, you know, our own teachers even, it would cost a lot more.
The amount that we spent for our semester this year was about half of what we spent last year with the other program. And that's not including the additional $90,000 that we spent just to serve special education students.
Right.
So that was on top of a separate pool, so yeah, we've, this is a lot more cost effective, I think the students are being successful. It's worked out really well for us, I think so far, you know.
Yeah, I, I think it has to, and there's, there's been not a lot of students in this situation, students who suffer from anxiety, mental health issues.
Yeah.
We've seen a lot of those come in who were failing in, in-person school because of that situation and they're starting to excel now.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
It's just nice to be able to offer an, another option, you know.
Really is.
Anyone else? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Greg.
All right, the next item.
Get me to leave you out, Greg.
We started looking at some departmental budgets at the last meeting, so I asked, since Greg was going to be here for the virtual school, I went ahead and asked him to go ahead and cover the career and technical education budget.
We're getting all kinds of handouts tonight, aren't we?
Yeah, well, I would be honest with you, if you have insomnia and you really need a good bed, pull this out about 11:00.
Oh, okay, you got it.
Take a good strong look at it, of course.
You're watching TV.
Better than the Indians, probably.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, a lot of that's informational that you can look through, like I said, if you're really bored, I'll kind of get through that. But really this first sheet is essentially everything that you need in a snapshot of what our budget is. So we have money for three pools of, two of them are state funds, a secondary block and the equipment replacement that come from the state. Perkins Five is federal. So we have to spend all our Perkins money every year. And if you look through that information, there's, I tried to find a good solid list, about three or four years ago, there was a good solid list of things that we can spend Perkins money on, it's really bizarre to me, some of the things that we can and can't spend money on. The same thing with secondary block, the equipment replacement. Perkins is federal money, so we have to be really careful how we spend that money. It, it's kind of strange to me because a lot of that can't be spent directly on students, like I can't, you know, Mark and I, years ago, we were doing Skills USA. We can't spend money to give kids membership to Skills USA. We couldn't spend money to provide transportation for those kids to Skills USA competition, some of that, a little bit's loosened up. I can provide membership for every student in the school, but that's 2,000 kids when you look at our high school and that eats up about 85% of my budget if I, you know.
Provide that for one, provide it for everybody.
It's, it's just a, I don't understand, so like, we can provide money for professional development for teachers, but we can't provide money for kids to go, and it's just, and secondary block's kind of the same way, it's a little more loose. But anything over $10,000, we have to get state approval for. So if, if we have a big ticket item, it's over 10,000, you guys see it too, but we have to get approval from the State Department before it even comes to you. So there, there's, you know, some things in place to, you know, make sure that we're spending the money appropriately. The equipment replacement is for, I, I like to say, you know, if you leave a car set for three months, it's probably not going to run right. You know, so you, things break and tear up, that's what that's really for. So with the secondary block and the equipment replacement, we can roll some of that money over to the next year. And so what I really try to do is hold about $200,000 in secondary block money at the end of the year and about $25,000 in equipment replacement, and the reason why is we have startup costs at the beginning of the year. One year we didn't get the money until, up in October, maybe even late October. And we can't buy, you know, equipment that we need, welding rods, food, things that we needed are consumable if we don't have this money there. So we, I like to roll that money over, that's been about the amount that we rolled over every year. And the same thing with the equipment replacement, you know, and you have those weird situations like if you've been to Wayne High School in the last couple of weeks, you notice that one of the greenhouses collapsed because of the ice. So that's something that we will replace. We're, we're working with Mr. Alexander to see who's going to, you know, flip the coin, see if the county's going to pick it up, that we're going to pick it up. But it's got to be replaced, and that's, you know, so that's, that's what that money's used for, so emergency use kind of things. We had to put a new battery in our forklift at Wayne High School. And, and you don't say any batteries, you're saying a car battery, it mattered like 2,300 pounds and it was about eight grand, I think it was on the approval. So, not really sure.
We checked prices in multiple places.
Yeah, we did, and that's with shipping and that's about, that's, I mean, that's a big chunk of the forklift is a battery. You know, I'm still not exactly sure how we're going to get that thing out to do what it is.
Right, if your fork chuck's not working, how are you going to lift that thing?
Yeah, right, so we thought we could use the tractor, or we'll see if the tractor will support that mail weight. I mean, it's, we've got a couple of other things too that, that we can probably use to slide it out, but yeah, you don't think about those things, do you? But that forklift has become really important there in Spring Valley because all these companies now want kids to be forklift certified when they come out of high school. And so I sent, I sent the two teachers from Spring Valley to get forklift, with Perkins money,
Right.
to get forklift certified so we can certify these kids.
Sure.
And so that's, you know, and so it, it's, it's really paid for itself. And so I had never really thought about that, but that, now I was talking with Mount West and it was the same thing. You know, we want these kids to be forklift certified and we put them through our pre, you know, journeyman stuff, so. But that's in a nutshell, we have to submit a couple of pieces of paper, one's called a CLNA. I did provide you both a copy of that because it's in Weavis and it's really weird. I took everything out on the LEA and that's that one document that has the Wayne High School thing on top of it. And I copied the, the pieces of that out and pasted it in, you can read that, so we have to resubmit those every two years. And so we're off, we're on the off-year cycle this year, so we will start next fall, have to redo all that. We use the meeting for, we do that P I D O one meeting and that, that counts as our meeting with the community too for, for these two documents. So I may get, hit you guys up for advice on that going forward, I mean, here to re, reevaluate that. So are there any questions about the budget? I know that was a quick overview that I can, if you want more, you can call me and I'll sit down and we'll go through the whole.
Out of our, out of our CT programs, do they have to put together a proposal and apply for the monies that we have or?
No, so what we do is, is, there used to be something called Program Organisation Grant, they did away with that. And they could ask for money from the State Department from 15,000, what they did was they took that money and gave us more secondary block money to take care of that, so unless we're really tight for money, we don't say no for anything.
So the schools just have to ask for?
They have to ask, and this is also for middle schools too, and I spent, Buffalo Middle's gotten a big chunk of money this year for their program too, and I tell all the principals at the beginning of the year and two or three times through the course of the year, hey, we have this money available, and when I did, Liz perked up like a LED light at a football game on me. And she's, she's with it, with her, with her career program in middle school, they do a really good job there.
Yeah, they've got, they've got quite a little ag program going.
Yeah, and we can support the ag programs, they just have to make the request. You know, there's, if it's feasible for us to do, like we can't buy seeds.
Right.
You know, stuff like that, but you know, like a new chicken coop or, but yeah, we can, we can work with them and purchase that. And we don't have a problem doing that, so I set aside money specifically for middle schools every year.
Fantastic.
The number of programs that are offered at each school, do they base that off student enrollment, what does that base off?
Okay, so there is a minimum required number of courses, C key courses you have to offer at each school based on the student population. So I think if I'm not mistaken, there might be one off, we have to offer at least five, I think in Spring Valley, at least four at Wayne, at least three at Tulsa, and then maybe one or two, you know, but I think five's the max we have to offer. So we have to offer that, anything above that is what the county decides they, they can support. So we, we are above at all three of those sites, we, we have more CT programs than what the minimum requirement is.
So since we're above at all three sites, you use your, that stretches your.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so instead.
That comes out of our budget and anything above that goes.
Well, he's, he's still supporting.
Or it comes out of your budget.
He has to be a little bit more selective about what he's purchasing.
So, yeah, I may, you know, sometimes I have to, especially with consumable stuff, I've seen, can you slow down a little bit? Because I'm a little worried that we're, we're pushing the boundary on it, you know, but usually, I, I mean, we don't have an, an issue.
Are there specific programs that we have to offer or is it just kind of up to?
No, it's kind of up to us what we offer, so I would like to offer more, but we have to hire the teachers and you know how that, that is. So I would like to offer more, but we have to hire the teachers and, you know, that, that is. At this moment, to have the teachers to do it, I mean, it, you know, it would be awesome. But you have to look at your, I guess, your return on investment. Are we getting enough kids through that program?
Right.
So we try to make sure that, we kind of look at programs. We want programs to have at least 10 completers every year. And so that's kind of the line. And the state, really, that's what they expect to.
Okay. Excellent. 10 completers. And I know Spring Valley probably has, what, eight, nine programs that I can think of off the top of my head. Wayne probably has about six to eight.
Yeah, yeah, they have one, I think they have one less, Tulsa has one less than Wayne.
Right, so there's plenty of options and opportunities.
There's a wide variety too. And, you know, when you, when you go to the, when you look at our programs, we have, I think that we offer something for every demographic that's been in. We try to, I know one female student said, you need to offer more classes for dudes. Which I was kind of, you know, but that was, you know, that was one of the responses I got from one of the kids when I was talking about it. You know?
Wow, okay.
So for her to point that out, it wasn't one of the boys.
Right, it was her. Yeah. Trying, I'm trying to think which ones are more, I mean, I feel like.
Well, I think, I mean, to me, I think that we maybe, I don't know, I mean, we offer pre-starter through the schools. Therapy services is huge at all three schools. And those teachers, I mean, we have 100% pass rate. So when we look at the NOCT exams, what I'm worried about, are we going to make that percentage? They're always the ones that kind of pushes all the, yeah, I mean, they're fantastic. And we've got the MedX program now. We're looking at doing a partnership with Tulsa across the river in Louisiana. So, you know, we're, I think we're doing a really good job with our kids. Work-based learning, the internship program, I can support that some. Grow Your Own is kind of a weird thing because.
It used to be our CT, but now it's kind of.
Yeah, it's not, but it kind of still is. And, yeah, so we don't really put much money into that either. I can work with them on, on student organization stuff some.
Right.
So like I said, we can't pay for, you know, we can't pay for 1,000 kids, 2,000 kids.
Yeah.
Memberships, which, you know, that's, just doesn't make sense to me.
Right, weird rules.
Yeah.
But I think it's, I think it's growing.
1,000 to 2,000.
Right. That's good. I think we've got a lot of different options, a lot of growth in that area. And that budget isn't as big as I thought it would be, so.
No, it's not.
You know, we do a lot with, with that money.
You can actually, I mean, theoretically, you can hire a teacher for up to three years. If we hire more than a couple of teachers, we've eaten up a huge chunk of our budget.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, so if you have a new program, you can, for the first three years, you can pull teacher salary, all that. But you start, you can't pull very many teacher salaries out of $400,000.
Yeah, they won't go very far. All right, any other questions? Well, thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Like I said, about 11 o'clock tonight, you're.
I'm going to save mine, Greg.
Pull this out.
I'll wait that hour.
Okay, if you'll open up the Manila folder that was there at your table.
Yes.
That has the personnel matters at the top of it.
I think I pulled on mine out. Yep, of course I did.
All right, we're going to make our way through this folder.
That's all right.
I'll just go and order the folder.
Okay.
First up. Or it might be in the one on the side there. First up, first up is the RIF transfer timeline. Again, this is just a draft of dates. You know, we're getting ready to enter personnel season for next year. And we will have to adjust the number of positions that we have in the schools based upon enrollment loss and decreases in, in state funding. So this is a breakdown of the timeline for, for doing so. So we're looking at the end of next month to deliver out any reduction in force or transfer letters that need to be delivered out to employees. That would be on or around February 25th. And then the board will actually see those recommendations and then have a chance to approve or deny those recommendations in, in early April. So you're looking around, April 8th would be a target date for, for those items to be approved. Of course, any employee that receives a RIF or transfer letter has an opportunity for a hearing. And so we would be looking to conduct hearings the week of March 25th. March 25th is a specific date. If we have a number of them, we might spread that over a few days. So those dates are just for your information. All right, the next page over. Now, you should see a document titled Immigration Law Guidance. So you've probably seen in the, in the national news that there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of movement around immigration within the past week and deportations and things like that. So the way I understand it, previously, schools, churches and hospitals were considered sensitive zones where immigration activities were not to take, immigration enforcement activities were not to take place. That has been waived during the month of January that was waived. So those immigration enforcement activities can possibly take place at a school. So the State Department has issued some guidance here. Just to summarize, basically, what they're indicating is, is if there is a warrant from a federal judge that comes in for activity to take place at school, that the district should involve its legal counsel in helping handle that matter. So I just wanted to provide you with the guidance from the State Department. So that's here.
Okay.
Basically, what we, what we will instruct our schools is, if by chance, if that would happen anywhere here, there, they would contact me directly. And then I would, I would deal with the officials on that. This outlines what the recommendations are from the State Department. The next document is an email that was received today. And this has to do with, you might have heard in the national news here in the last 48 hours about there's been a freeze on federal funds. And so this, this memo was addressing that and how it impacts schools. And basically what it says is that the temporary pause does not impact Title I. So that's our Title Programs, IDEA, which is our special education programs, or other formula grants, nor does it apply to federal Pell Grants and direct loans under Title IV. So basically, the funds that were frozen were for discretionary programs. At this point, we don't think that it impacts any of the, any of the school board's programs. In the last paragraph, they do note, they do note that they are checking with other federal agencies such as the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And that, that would be tied more to our food service program. We don't think that that freeze is going to have any impact on, on the school district. If I find out, otherwise, I will let you know.
Okay.
Next up is, we had talked about surplus properties.
Yeah.
And the getting some offers from some community organizations on the possible use of surplus properties. To this, to this point, we've received one proposal. That proposal was included here in your document. I'm just including it this evening as just an informational item.
Okay.
We still need to exhaust all other possible entities that would possibly make an offer. This was the, this is the original proposal, so I just wanted to get that into your hands.
Okay.
This is for Playmates for the Westmoreland Properties.
Yeah.
To date, we haven't received any offers on any other surplus, or any proposals, I should say, on any other surplus properties. I do need to do some follow-up with some of the folks that we originally contacted just to see if any are forthcoming. To this day, we haven't received that. Next up in the packet is a list of county vehicles. I think I told you at the last board meeting that I would get you an updated list of county vehicles. So that list is found in your packet. I'll leave that for you all to take with you. And if you have any questions regarding those items, you can let me know.
Okay.
Next up is a special release from Neola. It's a special release, January 2025. Neola is our policy company. And they have been sending us updates on Title IX litigation. And there were changes when, when the Biden administration came in, there were changes to Title IX regulations. And those regulations were being opposed in federal court by a number of states. I think West Virginia was included in that. And so that's been playing out at the, at the federal court level. And I've updated you along the way that it was being recommended to us that we maintain the Title I, follow the Title I guidance from previous to the latest updates from like 2022 because of the federal court action. So basically, there was a stay that was put on these new laws. This release makes that stay permanent. Says on January 9, 2025, a federal district court has issued a decision vacating the 2024 final rule. Consistent with the court's order, the 2024 Title IX regulations and these resources are not effective in any jurisdiction. So originally, there was only the states that had filed suit, if I remember correctly. They had put a stay on them in, in those particular states. And that included us. So we were still operating under old guidelines. Neola is advising us that we should proceed under those old guidelines on a, on a permanent basis now. I guess, I guess this could be appealed, but.
According to my question, I assumed it, like most decisions, it'll go on a ladder.
Good, very well, good. Okay, next up is, I've received a petition in the mail. Was sent to me by a parent of a student over at Fort Gay, pre-K through eight. And it was sent to me and to the board members as well. There was 15 pages to it. I did not copy all 15 pages for you.
Thank you.
There, I will represent, there are 15 pages of signatures. And I will be glad to email that to you if anybody would like a, the full set. But on the first page of the petition, basically what it is, and I think we've talked about this a little bit before, they're concerned about the start times for the schools. And specifically, this petition is about Fort Gay. And they're asking the board to consider moving the start time back between 8:00 and 8:30 instead of as early as 7:30. So there's a number of signatures that have been collected. So just FYI that that was received.
Okay.
Very reaction, there's an opposite negative reaction. Who's wrong with that?
Yeah. And then the last item is, and there's nothing in the packet for this, I wanted to mention about Genoa. So the, and again, this is statewide news about the Mingo Public Service District is having trouble with the water supply down there. I know that during the extremely cold temperatures, it froze off. And so apparently, my understanding, Crum PSD contracts with the Mingo PSD for water supply. And when water is in short supply in Mingo, then not enough to operate the system effectively doesn't come to Crum. And so they have to make decisions on where that water's going to go. And so there's multiple towers. The schools that are on that water line are Dunlow, Genoa, Tulsa and Crum pre-K through eight. That, the interruption in the water service, we've closed Dunlow on one day. We've closed Tulsa on two separate days. And we've closed Genoa five times over the interruption of that water service. Now, it would have been more if we wouldn't have had the, the weather cancellations during that period of time as well. And so at Genoa, we've been able to, and I had communicated this to you earlier in the week, but we've been able to open Genoa back up. And we're using the well that the, that the school originally ran on to provide water to be used for toilets. And then we're providing drinking water and self-contained hand washing stations so that we can have the school open. Because we just don't know how long this is going to be.
Right.
And so, I should have mentioned it while Mr. Clay was here, but the school has been very good about working under the circumstances to make sure that, you know, we're able to reopen the school and keep it open during this time. And so we'll be keeping our eyes on the situation. I did email some of our local delegates and just to make sure that they understood the impact it was having on schools here in Wayne County. Because when you see the state news, it mentions Mingo County being impacted quite a lot, but you don't hear much about Wayne. So I wanted to make sure that they understood the cancellations that was causing here. And then I've also notified the Department of Ed of the steps that we've taken. And of course, we consulted with the Health Department before taking the steps to reopen the school that we did to make sure that it was acceptable. So we're back open there. You know, I don't know, hopefully, as the temperatures have warmed up here this week, you know, hopefully, that's all, I don't know what the issue is. At first, we heard it was frozen lines. You would hope that would resolve itself here pretty quickly. If it's something more, I don't know. I've heard anything from it's going to be fine by Thursday to it might be six weeks.
It's a reoccurring thing. I've said it's been going on for four years that I'm aware of.
Mark, are you all on Genoa water?
We are, yes.
How far south does that go?
Richard?
Richard?
Yeah.
But Fort Gay has its own. It would be nice if we could make a connection to where there wouldn't be so many to pick up.
There's some meetings, there's some meetings going on right now that I, that I know that are, those kinds of things are look, being looked at.
There's one that actually would have the capability of taking on the extras, I think.
There are two, we have two in county that are capable of taking on extra.
Fort Gay, Wayne.
Genoa and Lavellette.
Genoa was not that one either.
Genoa and Lavellette. See, Lavellette's already at Joel's Branch.
Yeah, but I don't think that is, is that American water?
Not that, I don't know.
Like they are, for certain.
And my understanding is Genoa is at the end of the line. So they're always the, always the, tend to be the one affected. So.
Lavellette, like I said, Lavellette is at Joel's Branch, which you know is not that much further than Genoa.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, no board directives or board reports. So, and no unfinished business. So we can move on to our new business consent action items. Superintendent recommends approval of the following action items. Additional items received prior to the time of the meeting may be added. Discussion and or separate action of items may be requested by members of the board and or the superintendent. Number one, consider for approval the recommended personnel matters, pages one through three. I need a motion. Motion by Mark, second by Dennis. Questions or concerns on our personnel matters?
And that's.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
What are our amendments?
So on page, page one, there was a blank there for the itinerant school psychologist, and that's Danielle Ryder. And her effective date has been changed to February 5th. And then on page two, Macy Castle is being hired as the autism mentor at Wayne Middle. And there, and there were two other blanks on that page, just in case it was new employment or a, or a transfer that, that actually took that autism mentor position at the bottom of the page. So that's just been marked down.
Yep.
And then at the top of page three, Rebecca Toppens has moved from halftime cook at Tulsa to eight-hour cook in Spring Valley effective January 30th. Those are the changes.
So the eight-hour cook under employment, we just need to mark that one off, right?
Correct.
So there's an autism mentor at the very bottom.
Yeah, got that one. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead and second on that. Dennis?
Dennis?
Yeah. All right, any other questions or concerns on our personnel matters? None, all in paper? Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Number two, consider for approval the minutes of the Wayne County Board of Education, pages four through 11. That's meeting number six. Actually, we have number six, seven, eight, and nine, and 10.
And.
Eleven, and 12, and 13, and 14.
You're 14, so let's go back.
Six through 14, I am going to, I want to remove number seven from consideration this evening.
Hold on a minute.
There was an error found in it that we need to get corrected, so we'll bring it back to you.
Okay, remove number seven?
Seven for correction.
Yeah, well, it's, it's number three on the page, but it's a regular meeting, number seven, the minutes for regular meeting, number seven. On pages twelve through twelve.
Yeah.
So.
And then I have another one. On meeting thirteen, page forty-nine, or page fifty. Okay, on page fifty, we're down at the bottom where it's got the transfers revisions with the blanks. But then it's over on page fifty-one, the way it should be without that, so she just needs to kind of take that out.
Take out the bottom part of that page.
The bottom part of the page. See what I'm saying, Todd?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we can just go ahead and remove that here.
Yeah, just remove that now. Yeah, that's all that is.
Okay.
Okay. Just remove that. So.
Anybody else have any corrections?
I'm a, a motion to approve as amended, or all the board meetings as amended.
I think you can say.
Except for number
three.
Seven, or does Dennis already do that?
Yeah.
Okay, Dennis.
Okay, so the, the motion is to approve. The motion is to approve all the board meeting minutes with meeting number seven removed from the list.
Yeah.
And with the correction made to page fifty on meeting number thirteen.
Yep.
With corrections.
Right. So Dennis made that motion.
Nice second.
Johnita made the second. Any questions or concerns on those meeting minutes as corrected? None? All in favor?
I love doing a whole bunch at one time.
Right. Motion carries five to zero. All right, number eleven. Consider for approval, the voucher payments for September twenty twenty four on pages fifty-nine through sixty-seven.
Motion.
Motion by Randy, second, Johnita. Questions or concerns on those voucher payments? Page fifty-nine through sixty-seven.
You said, you said forty-nine?
Page fifty-nine through sixty-seven.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that.
I was in the wrong.
Is there a second on that?
Johnita was the second.
Johnita made it.
Any questions on those voucher payments?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Of course.
It's all right.
They're done that, Mark. Just different superintendent.
Okay, page sixty-one at the top.
Okay.
Three quarters of the way down the page, just want to know what Wright Express Corporation is. Forty-two thousand four hundred and twelve sixty-two. I'm sorry?
There you go.
Okay. Okay. And a little bit below that, thirty thousand dollars to Cabo County Public Library.
That's our donation to D M N. Yeah. Yep.
Part of our excess levy.
Oh, from that area. Okay, I got you.
It's our donation.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that, that's included in the budget.
Yeah.
Just our annual payment.
Yeah.
Next page, page sixty-two. Top of the page there, six thousand dollar expenditure to SAS Pro.
That is pro.
That's our cosmetology program.
Okay. And I'm assuming down at the bottom of the page, once again, Playmates, one hundred and eighteen thousand seven sixty-four, forty-five is.
The payment on the P O that was approved at the beginning of the year.
The million some dollars. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, page sixty-three. Brewer Garrett Company, is that a, an additional HVAC company?
No, that was our energy savings company that we did the bus garage renovation with. And we did the lighting upgrade across the district. It's a energy savings contract, so there's annual costs that go on, go along with that. Yeah.
Green.
This is, this is the last payment for that project.
Yeah.
That's just how much money.
That's, that's the cost here is that they report out the energy savings that from the previous year.
Page sixty-four. Like the fifth one down or so, CS Ground Specialists.
I don't know that one either.
That's the.
I looked it up. It's a company from owner that.
Tree removal.
Tree removal. They removed eight trees down at Wayne Elementary where we're putting in the new addition. They removed those trees from that area. So that wouldn't be overhanging the new addition.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question is, did we not have a Wayne County company that was willing to do that, or?
Usually not for that price, no.
Okay.
I was going to say tree removal was not cheap.
No, I had one trimmed, just trimmed and it was ridiculous.
Removed a long time ago. I was glad I had insurance coverage because it just astounded me by the cost.
I'll be glad on the next time we do a tree removal to get some prices, but.
Yeah, I mean, I was just curious because I see, you know, I see we have Outway Tree Service. There's a couple of other ones that I'm aware of. And I, I'm just a firm believer, if we can keep it in the county, we, we need to try to do that personally.
I would do too. Yeah.
Uh, the gentleman.
I believe he is local, isn't he? Corey, is Corey local?
He's a, he's a, he, this guy's, he's out of Cabo or Cabo or Lincoln.
That company.
CS Ground Services. Yeah, yeah, he's out of Cabo.
Yeah.
He's got the contract with the city of Milton and he's done quite a bit of work for us just because he was just considerably cheaper than everybody else. But it's been a, it's been a few years since I've checked it. We'll check it again next time we do one.
On page sixty-five, almost all the way down to the bottom, the Rush Enterprises, eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. I know I've asked this question before and.
If this is the payment on when you ask it before.
Okay.
So you approved the P O before and asked the question, this is just the actual payment because the work's been done. It was refinishing the gym floors at, at several locations.
Okay.
So this wasn't.
When you approved the P O, you were just pre approving the work and then they came in and did the work and, and.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something else.
Nothing new, same payment.
Okay. That was my question. It's not new. It's just payment for previous.
I'm finished. For now.
You're fine. Hit all the ones I had a question on, so. All right, any other questions or concerns about those voucher payments? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Twelve, consider for approval, the purchase requisition order in quotes in excess of five thousand dollars on pages sixty-eight through seventy-one. Motion?
Motion.
Johnita, second. Dennis?
What time do I need to request pull for separate consideration?
You can now.
I would like to pull the first one on the snow removal for separate consideration, please.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can pull the countywide purchase order for snow removal on page, what page is this? Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
For separate consideration.
You want us to vote for it? You want us to vote for it separately?
Right, we can do a discussion separate. Let's
Okay.
Move on to the pages, that would be sixty-nine through seventy-one then.
Pull sixty-eight, alright.
So now we're just considering the requisitions for pages sixty-nine through seventy-one at this point.
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns on those? On the Mason and Berry, the keypads?
Yeah.
For the students, is, is that replacing current keypads or what, what exactly are we?
We've talked about these before, haven't we?
We're setting up a, I don't want to say anything publicly, we can step, we're setting up a security, a little upgrading security for some of the buildings.
Right.
I can give you more information later if we can.
That's fine. I figured it was a cer- security.
Security thing.
Update, but I didn't know.
Yeah, so it's new, it's new, it has not been there before.
Okay. Gotcha. And then we've already talked about the pork truck and the battery and how huge it is and how expensive they are apparently. Any other questions or concerns? Also needs a new oven?
Yep.
None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now let's go back to page sixty-eight and the snow removal. Motion?
Aye.
By Dennis, second.
Second.
Second by Johnita. Questions and concerns?
Yes, I do have some questions. How many hours were spent? Well, I know this is money that's to be encumbered and I had a conversation with Mr. Alexander on Friday, I believe it was about that. When was this, when were these bids put out? How many hours have been used for snow removal thus far? In other words, where are we at with that?
Say, estimate, we're probably forty to sixty hours in on s- snow removal. And that's, that's per vehicle. So when we bid this out, we bid it out in twenty eighteen for snow removal services. And we had received a bid of ninety dollars per hour to conduct the, the snow removal work. We bid it out in zones, Spring Valley, Tulsa, and Wayne High School, so we've operated off that price. We've had several years where we haven't spent a dime.
Right.
There was just no need for the services at all. Matter of fact, after we bid it, I think it was about two years before we used the services. This year has been the most expensive year. Just because of the, the weather we had followed by the
Timing.
The temperatures after the fact, you know, usually it melts off in a few days and you don't need to, you don't need to have as many hours as you do. But we, Ekers provides us with up to six trucks with plows and then a skid steer as well. And he was originally, the plan for this year was to have him work in one zone. But the other operators that we had that were going to work the other two zones have, have dropped out. When I broke a, broke a plow during the first snow, first event, during the first snow removal, the second one's equipment couldn't handle the snow that was on the ground, so we had to use him for the entire county. That's why this one is more, more significant than what we've seen in several years.
It's, it's my understanding, according to the state school board, under the Office of Accountability, that anything that's bid or that's under, that's, that needs to be bid every three years over twenty, ten thousand dollars. And if it's twenty eighteen and we're in twenty twenty-five, I guess my question is, is why have we not put that out of forbid again? You know, I know that there's years that we don't have snow, but we always need to plan that we're going to have snow. And see, can we do it in a more efficient way? Could we, who is, who can do these types of projects? Just anybody? I mean, Pat Paul with the tractor over by Genoa, can he do it?
As long as they're registered with the, with the state, anybody can do it.
When we say registered with the state, were we talking about a contractor's license?
Business registration.
Yeah, like a.
To be paid, right?
Yeah, to be paid, like we have for our contracted people. Right?
Yeah.
Where they have their own business, like the speech pathologists and all that, and they're as a, you know, doing business as.
Yeah, and in answer to your question mark, the reason that we, the reason we haven't bid it out since twenty eighteen is because the thought is, is if we can get it at or near the price that we got in twenty eighteen, we're not going to do any better than that.
I spoke with a, a gentleman that has a lawn service and he was interested in bidding on zones, uh, one zone, this zone actually. And he said he would rather do it by the size of the parking lot or whatnot instead of ninety dollars an hour.
So just a flat rate for that.
Flat rate, and I personally think, and you know, just my voice, you know, my, I personally think that we need to take a serious look at this and do it in that fashion and see if we can't get this down a little, well, quite a bit, to be honest with you. Cause when I'm looking at this purchase requisition, the request is fifty thousand dollars, that's a salary, the way I look at it. And I know that we have to move, I know that we have to remove the snow and all that. I looked today on, just a quick look at good quality snow plows that would fit on the front of a pickup truck. The highest one I could see right off the bat was twenty-five hundred dollars. And the maintenance trucks, these are ideas that I'm going to go ahead and throw out. I'm assuming this appropriate time, I hope so. But I was thinking and looking at the number of vehicles, number of trucks that we have, if we fitted our trucks with, with those snow plows of twenty-five hundred dollars, we might have an upfront cost. And then we could ask our maintenance people if they wanted to take those responsibilities on. And if they don't, could we not move on down to our bus drivers and our other people and see if they wanted to take those responsibilities on? And, and try to get this down a little bit. And next year we may not have any, we don't know. I mean, only the good Lord knows that, right? And I know we've had some snow, but I'm assuming that we're paying ninety dollars to drive from Canova to Crum in an hour, right? So that's.
Yeah, once they start.
Yeah, so see, that, that's where I think that we could do a better, more efficient job by putting it on our vehicles and having those and asking our people, which I really feel like that we would have people that would want to do that in, in certain areas. And I know we have maintenance peop- maintenance trucks all over the county that literally go home with the maintenance guys. And if they want to do it, that would be wonderful for extra pay or whatnot.
Overtime.
And if they don't want to, then ask the bus drivers that are C D L certified or are capable of driving our vehicles. That's just something that I thought of and I really think we need to, to take a hard look at that.
Well, I think, I think if we're going to have winters like this winter, then yeah, we definitely.
We need to plan on having them like that and hope for the best.
And hope for the best.
On the, just playing devil's advocate though, I mean, we can't like leave a plow on our maintenance trucks all the time.
There's quick connects. It's like a tractor.
Right.
I've done, looked into this, it's a quick connect.
Right, and how durable are those if, within, you know?
Their industrial strength. I, I was on there today with, I was looking at.
Well, I mean, we have, you know, people that do that and then their trucks broke down, so, you know, I'm just wondering how advantageous it would be to put that kind of cost upfront if we're not going to use them every year. Is it more efficient to farm it out?
I've talked to, I've talked to Cabo, they operate their own maintenance trucks a lot.
Sure.
And I've talked to them about how they did it. They also bought one of the big dump trucks, I think, or bought some heavy duty trucks.
We had one here with a, with a snow plow on it. It might have been before your time, but there was a dump, there was a dump truck here with a snow plow.
They told me, they told me they were paying about five thousand for the plow. And then they were paying about ten thousand dollars for the salt spreaders to go onto the trucks. And then they had to, they built a building for salt storage that was, he said about fifty thousand dollars for the building for salt storage. But you know, that's, that's a worthwhile investment if we're going to have winters like this constantly. Now the mo- the most that we've spent up to this year was ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, like arrangements, pass on everything too, don't you, and we store that?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So the ma- the most we had spent up till, till this year was about ten thousand dollars, but it did, and you know, you got.
Haven't had a bad winter.
Yeah, you got one person in the entire district. So it adds up quick because we've got, we've got twenty-two sites that are being plowed. Bus garage. The, we do the bus garage, we do the, the area here at the central office. You do the career center as well as Spring Valley, so we have. You do the Career Center as well as Spring Valley. So we have a total of twenty-two sites that are being plowed.
Do we do the West Memorial Building?
No.
No.
Maybe we could do some kind of hybrid. You know, look into doing some kind of hybrid plan where we have maybe a truck or two that's available or a plow or two that's available to us.
Yeah, on a, on a normal snow, we wouldn't have been involved in as near as many hours as were this time. But this, this first snow took, took two rounds all over the district and then it followed up with a third one. So that's, that's how we're so deep into this one.
And if they're going to charge that much. If they're going to charge that much, then try to get someone in that zone so you're not paying ninety dollars just from to get to the
Exactly.
where they're going. You know what I'm saying? Let people in this area, people in Crum.
I think that was the original.
Right, it was. Then I mean, do it again if you get people.
We received a bid for the Spring Valley area. That was it.
Yeah, but I mean, you know.
We actually, the guy that had our, the guy that's been doing it for us prior to, prior to this year, had our lawn mowing business.
Okay.
And then he was trying to do everything, but it was, you know, he's got one truck and you're trying to do eighteen schools, but we're all, you know, if anybody's interested in doing it and anybody listening to the meeting, if anybody's interested in doing it, they can contact me. As long as they're registered, we can add them as long as they're willing to, you know, work for the prices that were, that, that we had bid out originally.
But I seriously think we need to.
Are you listening, Brian?
To take.
Are you listening?
I've got more snow by work that I can handle myself.
Yeah, we're, we're open to anybody because we need, we need the help because the way it goes down.
That's what I was saying, because he's close to mine and I've let.
It can take twenty hours to get all the lots cleaned off. And if it was a, if it was a smaller event, you would want to get them cleaned off closer than that. But I understand what you're saying about per school. That's probably a good idea.
And if we don't go that route, I, I seriously personally think we need to seriously consider having our own. I really do. And I can't.
Well, let's, let's do this. We'll, we'll price it out per school. And we'll bid it out per school. We'll see what kind of prices we get back and then we'll get some numbers together on doing our own. And then we'll let you all take a look at both.
Yeah.
And we're not going to have a problem with that at all.
If I was for me, the requisition's fifty thousand dollars. Is that a cost we've already incurred? That's for this year.
In case.
So can't go over that. So we've not, we've not spent fifty grand initially.
Forty seven.
Do you know?
Probably spent thirty-five to forty grand.
Yeah, we're getting close.
Since you included me in that, man, go. My question would be the sidewalks and salt in the sidewalks and salt in the parking lot, is that all? That's all part of the service, isn't it?
It is part of the service now. It wasn't part of the bid. It was just the lots. But the contractor we have now does do the main sidewalk to the building. Not all of them, but the main entryway to the building.
Some schools that are smaller, I'm sure janitorial services could take care of the sidewalks. But some schools as large as Spring Valley, it would take an army of janitors to take care of sidewalks there. That's enormous now.
And I have to think from the janitorial thing that this one, it was sadag gone, longstanding, cold. I still don't have the ice off on my driveway for shaded.
In the old days, the custodians took care of.
Oh, the old days, we walked uphill both ways in the snow.
Yeah. Maybe you're just lucky. Like when my kids were going to elementary, I found that wet elementary was free because I was so close with involved.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't think you're going to get that back.
Well, and you bring that up. That's what people told me that it used to be up to each individual school.
Yeah, it did.
To figure it out. I know when I, when I went.
We took that on.
Yeah.
In twenty eighteen because, you know, I wanted some confidence that we would get them cleared off and could reopen and.
Like that lead, that includes the church parking lot too, because that's, that's used.
Yeah, now it does.
Hey, Brian, if you'll do it for free, we can get you a lot of work.
You could probably like give me the whole county. I forgot about you doing that. I was going to go to. I saw you there. And then you started bad mouthing me to my brother.
Well, you know, I was just helping him out, but.
He was going to help me out.
Was a disaster.
Right.
It was a very bad ordeal for somebody.
I mean, it's hard enough when you have to remove it once, but we have twenty-one places that practically had to be removed three different times, so.
Well, we're going to have three people involved and two of them dropped out.
Right, yeah.
And, and it's understandable that somebody broke down. You know, we, we broke down the first night into, into the Sunday night on that. We were down for sixteen hours. You know, and I actually reached out to Jason Ekers for help on a couple of places that I needed immediately to leave on and they, they gave me.
So definitely a, just an odd situation that we find ourselves in this particular year, not something that we.
And if you bid it out, I, I would suggest bidding it out on a per school basis. Or three schools that.
Zones.
Right.
Three special areas or something like that too. But that, if you did bid it out per school, that might be a little more advantageous to you. Yeah, the biggest thing is having somebody that can perform.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
And then if somebody can't perform, like somebody broke down like myself or that other gentleman, you've got to have back.
There you go.
And that's, that is, that was good this time that there were so many trucks involved that we didn't have to worry that somebody was going to break down and then be out.
Not be able to take care of some, some area.
I don't know what the breakdown on the, on the bill was. That would be my interest as far as that goes. But I mean, it's, it's a lot easier to see it than it's like delivery of mail.
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions or concerns on that particular invoice? One of the purchase order. All right. And again, this is just a blanket. It's not costs that we've already incurred, so.
Yeah, we'll cancel it out and I'll report back to you if there's anything left in it when we cancel it out. Hopefully there won't be more snow.
Right, I'm hoping that that's the end of it.
You're cutting it, it's in.
Sorry about that. All right. So this is the page sixty-eight requisition that we're voting on now. Dennis made the motion. Jonita made the second.
Yes.
We have no more questions or concerns. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. All right. Let's move on to our new business, separate action items. Number one, consider for approval, the treasurer report for December twenty twenty-four on page seventy-two.
Motion.
Motion by Jonita.
Second.
Second by Randy. Questions or concerns on that treasurer report? Jeb is here to answer our questions if necessary. None?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Two, consider for approval, the budget supplement and transfers for page seventy-three through eighty-six. Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Mark. Questions or concerns on the supplement transfers? No one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Three, consider for approval, the out of state field trip request, Wayne High School students to travel to Portland, Oregon to attend an anatomy connected workshop March twenty-seventh through April second, funded by Marshall University.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jonita. Second.
Second.
Randy. Questions or concerns on that travel?
Sounds like a good opportunity.
What, what is that? I mean, Mr. Alexander, can you explain? It goes, it said attached letter of, and what?
It's in our separate attachment.
What kind of a conference? I couldn't read that writing, to be honest with you. I just wondered what kind of a conference it was.
I remember right, it was a student who had an opportunity, was invited to the conference by a professor.
I under- yeah, I understood that. It said Marshall University, but.
The bio med program. There should have been, there should have been a letter attached to it. I'll send you, I'll send you.
That's fine. I just didn't have it. I just wondered, I just wanted to know what it was.
To you. So this was, the teacher had participated in training at Marshall University and the, and Marshall University sponsoring the teacher and the student to go out.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah.
I think it was, because I read it.
Well, I didn't have it, so it's okay. I, I'm, I'm cool.
I don't receive it in this agenda though. It looks like it might have.
I don't know if it was in the email. Or maybe it was in the agenda we reviewed and somehow got separated out.
That's what must have been it because I do remember reading it. So we'll get, we'll get everybody.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it to everybody tomorrow.
So this is for the students' travel. Well, it's, no, we got to do them separately. Right. So this is the student travel. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Consider for approval, the out of state travel request to Portland, Oregon for the anatomy connected workshop also funded by Marshall University. And this is for the employee. Motion by Dennis. Second.
Second.
By Randy. Any questions or concerns on the employee travel? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number five, consider for approval, out of state employee travel to Clearwater Beach, Florida for international conference on autism, intellectual disability and developmental disabilities on January twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, funded by Title I. And this is the one that we saw.
Yeah, we already knew about it.
For approval at the meeting that we canceled, so we're getting it late here.
Got you.
Yep.
Motion by Randy, second.
Second.
Jonita. Any questions or concerns on that employee travel? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Another out of state employee travel to the same conference, same funded by, but this one's funded by special programs. So a different funding source, but the same conference.
Motion.
Motion by Jonita.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any questions or concerns on that employee travel?
It's kind of hard to vote against them after the fact.
Right, they're already, they're already getting back, so.
But we're going to have them come and tell us what they learned, right? They're going to do a presentation.
Exactly. So all in favor on this one?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Potential items for future agenda.
I'd like to.
Yes, Dennis.
Some kind of a little study done or something like that because it slowed down a little bit on these school problems where you have school shootings and like. But I think somewhere along the line, we need to do some research and find out what it would cost to make our school safe with safe school entrances and you know, lock them up, you know, there might be some chance of state funding.
We turn in every year to the state to provide safe school entrances for any school that currently doesn't have one.
Yeah.
So we had worked up a price with our architects. It's, this has been two, three years ago. And we submit that annually to the state and it's a part of that, the legislature had approved that Safe Schools Fund. And the original, originally what they provided money for in that fund was to place the cameras in the self-contained special education rooms. It's my understanding that since that has occurred, that there hasn't been any money allocated for that particular grant. But they ask us every year to submit and we submit that every single year. The, now they, there is some money that is going to, and we're actually applying for some grants and that purchase that you made this evening, the twelve thousand dollar purchase we talked about for security for Wayne High and Tulsa High School. We'll try to get some grant reimbursement on that. And there's a, they're going to give out a series of grants, but they're fifty thousand dollar grants. And so we're, we're applying for one of those and we're going to do these keypads that we're talking about here and then we're going to do some fencing down in the, down at C K Metal as well. We're going to submit that and try to get some money back for it.
Every little bit that we can do helps, so.
Did you hear anything about the legislature making any kind of moving, changing the school like formula?
Thursday night.
We can discuss it.
That's what the special meeting, part of the special meeting. Hopefully we'll know something Thursday night. We've got commitments. I've got commitments from everyone that I talk to.
Best case is just present our case and our needs and, you know, cross our fingers and see what happens. So at least they're willing to come and discuss it. So that's a good sign.
There's already fakers involved.
Right. All right, anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Jonita?
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah.
Second by Mark.
Go, Mark.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. It is seven fifty-eight.
And thank you to those that joined us on one.
Yes, thank you all.
How many, Tom, how many?
We were up to six at one point.
Wow.
We've tripled our numbers.